Good evening. It is 6:01 on Monday, May 19th, and I call this meeting of the Clear Creek Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present and that this meeting has been duly called, that its notice has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. We are going to move to our first item of business, and that's administering the oath of office. Congratulations to both. And we will move to our next item of business, which is election of board officers. Per policy D, sorry, B D A A, the board elects officers at the first meeting after each election and qualification of board members. Board officers normally serve for a term of one year or until a successor is elected. And officers are limited to two consecutive terms in any one position. So the first position that we will take nominations for is the office of president. And so nominations are now in order for the office of president.
Mr. President?
Ms. Cheka?
I would like to elect trustee Cottrell as president.
Thank you, Ms. Cheka. And other nominations for the position of president? Seeing none, I will call a vote. All those in favor of Mr. Cottrell as president of the board, if you'll raise your right hand? You can vote for yourself. But that's up to you, that's up to you. You vote how you want to vote. So it's a unanimous vote with one abstention, not against. So I will, I will switch seats with you, Mr. Cottrell, and you. Thank you. Thank you for the confidence. Alright, so with that, now we are to vice president. I guess, it's not really a script, is there? So we're looking for nominations for vice president. So do we see a nomination?
Mr. President? I nominate Jessica Cheka for vice president.
Thank you, Ms. Lilly. Alright, any other nominations? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your right hand. And you're abstaining? And for the office of secretary, do I have any nominations for the office of secretary?
Mr. President, I nominate trustee Larson for secretary.
Thank you, Mr. McKay. Do we have any other nominations? Alright, all in favor, please raise your right hand. So we have four. And any opposed? With that, Mr. Larson, you are secretary. Thank you very much. Go into closed session, right? So it is 6:06. The board will now move to closed session as authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Section 551.001, concerning purposes permitted by the act, including 551.071, consultation with attorney, 551.072, deliberation regarding real property, 551.074, deliberate appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignments, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public employee or to hear a complaint or charge against an employee. So at this time, 6:07, go into closed session. It's 6:50. Call this meeting back to order. And the first item on the agenda is the administrative oath of office. And if any immediate family wants to come in after they take their oath and take pictures, you're more than welcome to. Any family photos, please come on down? Congratulations, ladies. Alright, next item, pledge of allegiance.
And I believe we have some Stuart Seagulls here to help tonight? Okay, well, there's the flags right there. So we're gonna turn around that way. And do I have? Who's gonna help lead this? Do I have a fifth grader here? You wanna help me? You ready? Okay, we're gonna say the pledge together, okay?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with one objective, justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to each Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
And please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, may be seated. Stay here just for a minute, okay? You're gonna help us? Alright, so we are going to open our meeting with our mission statement, and we are gonna let our Stuart Seagulls help us do that, okay? So you ready?
Yeah. The mission of Clear Creek Independent School District, the visionary leader in igniting learning for all is to ensure each student achieves, contributes, and leaves with integrity in a safe and nurturing environment distinguished by authentic relationships, service before self, and the spirit of exploration.
Thank you, and what about our vision?
Vision, empowering every student with a world-class education that ignites passions and fuels endeavors.
Thank you, and what about our core values?
Caring.
Citizenship.
Fairness.
Respect.
Responsibility.
Trustfulness.
Thank you. And our value statement?
Is people, purpose, and promise.
Oh, thank you! What a great reminder what they shared with us visually of our vision, our mission, and our purpose. We are so grateful. Now, I know you're really sad because Thursday's your last day of school. Okay, so what are you gonna miss? What are you gonna miss?
I'm gonna miss second grade and all my good teachers.
Yay, okay. Alright, that's wonderful. What else? What are you gonna miss? Somebody?
Uh, my friends, because I'm going into sixth grade and I'm going to a different school than all of my other, most of my other friends.
So yeah, so new school?
Nothing.
That's okay. That's a core value of honesty.
Well, I'm gonna miss everybody who showed me respect, responsibility, caring, fairness. I'll miss you, everybody.
I'm gonna miss my amazing teachers that I had two times in a row, because like, they were amazing.
That is amazing, and you're fortunate that you got to leave. You, that's okay, you don't have to say.
I'm gonna miss all my teachers and the friends that are going to a different school than I am.
Because when you're in fifth grade, then you go to a different school. You're gonna miss your teacher. Think so? Maybe? He's thinking about it. Thank you so much, we are so grateful. Thank you, parents. Okay. Well, as you can tell tonight, we have a lot of students to celebrate and recognize. And as our Stuart Seagulls are leaving, I'm going to ask Ty Halford to come on up. Ty? Alright, we are thrilled to honor Clear Creek High School coach, Ty Halford, as he was named the 2425 Boys Water Polo Coach of the Year by the Texas High School Coaches Association. He's been the coach at Clear Creek High School for 12 years and led the boys varsity water polo team to the state championship in October. And we have Cindy Butcher here from director, from State Representative Bonin's office, with a special recognition from the state of Texas.
So thank you all for being here this evening. It is my absolute distinct pleasure and honor to get here to be able to present you with a state resolution from State Representative Dr. Greg Bonin from the Texas State Legislature. And just in part, it reads, "Whereas Ty Halford of Clear Creek High School in Lake City has been named the 2024-25 Boys Water Polo Regional Coach of the Year by the Texas High School Coaches Association, and whereas through his leadership and commitment to excellence, Ty Halford has made a positive impact in the lives of countless student athletes, and he is indeed deserving of this prestigious accolade. Now therefore, be it resolved that Ty Halford be congratulated on his selection as the 2024-25 Texas High School Coaches Association Boys Water Polo Regional Coach of the Year, and that he be extended sincere best wishes for continued success. Sincerely, State Representative Dr. Greg Bonin."
Alright, thank you. And I just have to say, when, when they won, so Ms. Orr, as a former water polo player, coach, yes, jumped in the water too. So the team's in, Ty's in, she, and Coach Killingsworth. It was a wonderful experience, yes, yes. Everyone felt like they were part of it. Congratulations, we are so proud and so grateful for all you've done. Congratulations. Okay, well, we have a number of career and technical education students to celebrate tonight, and so we are gonna do some celebrations by school. So these students have earned top awards at the state level, just like we talked about. We really like to celebrate these high achieving students, and sometimes we have to wait to the end of the year to put all these accolades together, and so we have several for you tonight. These are top state-level awards in health science and business, from, from health science and business to culinary and automotive. The following organizations have proudly represented their school and our district. So as I call the names of these students, if teachers and/or principals of these students are here, please join them and we'll take pictures by school. So we will get started with HOSA, Future Health Professionals Club at Clear Lake High School, under the leadership of Lyndon Nochert, earned first place, first place in healthcare photography. Annie Nguyen, second place in health education. Ollie Ramden, Camille Belcher, Nua Ducah, Wade Eubank, and Madison Griffin. Congratulations. Alright, we have a few more from Lake. Yes, come on up. Ms. Raska, Business Professionals of America at Clear Lake High School under the leadership of Jeremy York, earned honors for fundamentals of web design. Arnold Zhang. Sea Number Programming, Gary Sun. Networking Administration using Cisco. Lucas Rigolo. Medical Coding, Amelia Nguyen. Small Business Management, Kealan Monk. Small Business Management, Prepared Speech, Eva Cogburn. Am I right on that? And Ms. Raska, I believe that these are some of your Lake honorees at state, so we'll go ahead and take a picture. Okay, and how many of y'all are seniors? Raise your hand. Okay, alright, real quick. I know I'm not, I don't have a lot of time. Where are you going to school?
University of Texas at Austin.
Rice University.
University of California, Berkeley.
California, Berkeley.
UT Austin.
Alright, state champions, great job, thank you. Thank y'all so much. Thank y'all very much. And now we have some high achieving students from Clear Springs High School. Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America Club at Clear Springs High School under the leadership of Ashley Highsmith, earned second place in teaching strategies. Ada Cantu. Skills USA Automotive Technology with automotive instructor. Michael Hedger, come on in. Clear Springs High School earned first place Automotive Quiz Bowl. Lauren DeFosse, Aiden Torstrik. Kwasi Binette. Michael Hodson, Cooper Weddy, and Drake Schilling. DECA Emerging Leaders and Entrepreneurs in Business Marketing. This is our, we're gonna stop right there, right now. I think this is our Clear Springs team, and I think you can tell who's in automotive. Very good, and teaching, we're thrilled with all of that. We'll take a quick picture. Okay, and I get to ask, seniors, raise your hand. I know, I know.
Priory Young University, Idaho.
San Jacinto Community College.
And tell them what that is.
Um, this is our banner from Skills USA because we won first place in state automotive quiz bowl.
San Jack.
Excellent, excellent. And may I ask, do you already have a job? Are you working right now? Where are you working?
Gay Buick GMC.
Fritida Chevrolet.
Straight, this is their passion and they're working. Thank you guys so much. And where are you going, are you a senior? Oh, but you're gonna go teach, and then you're gonna come back to Clear Creek ISD. Alright, that's great. Thank y'all very much, thank you.
Good, good.
Okay, now we have some high achieving students from Clear Brook High School's DECA Club with advisor Erica Durant, who earned state honors for community awareness project. Danetta Paul, Jayhe Patel, Lokene Polikah, Human Resource Management, which advanced to the international level, Cameron Gutierrez. Congratulations, team, and this is our Brook. We're gonna take a picture. Okay, Mike, same question, any seniors in the group? Whoa, okay, alright, yes.
Uh, Rice University.
What are you gonna study?
Uh, Business Management and Economics.
University of Texas at Dallas.
Biology, pre-med.
I'm going to Texas A&amp;M University.
Biochemistry on a pre-med track.
I'm going to the University of Houston. Biology.
Congratulations, thank you so much. Congratulations. Okay, we have some more. Clear Lake High School, now we've got some DECA students, and so we're gonna start with our Clear Lake High School DECA program. Advisor Heather Jefferson. Hospitality and Tourism Operations Research. Emma Queo and Ariana Patel. Independent Business Plan, Kirk Gensler. Raphael Zhang and Luca Giante. Business Solutions Project, Jay Patel. And Arnold Zhang. Innovation Plan, also advanced to international DECA. Uh, Drami Shaw. Is that it? Oh, yay, Heather, okay, great. We'll take a quick picture. Yes, oh yes, we have to have Ms. Raska back. Lots of Lake. Alright, so whoa, 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 yeah. Alright, so seniors, see, everybody is interested. We graduate starting tomorrow, right? Alright, so y'all are graduating on Thursday? Yes, so tell any seniors, anybody graduating? All of you, okay, we're gonna, but where are you going to school?
Wanna go to East.
I can tell. We'll let that go, okay.
Hi, I'm going to Texas A&amp;M University. Business.
I'm going to Yale University to study economics.
I'm going to UT Austin, Computer Science.
Also A&amp;M for Political Science.
I'm going to A&amp;M for Biomedical Engineering.
Alright, I think that this world-class education has great products right here. Thank you guys so much, congratulations. Now, we are back. We have some NASA hunch design and prototype projects. CCI SD teachers and students of excellence finalists. Mr. Merritt, come on in. As our vision states, "We empower students to pursue their passions and fuel endeavors." One strong example is through our partnership with NASA as part of the high schools united with NASA to create hardware, or otherwise known as hunch. We have many students who've been recognized as students of excellence for their projects from Clear Creek High School under the leadership of Robyn Merritt. Now, I'm gonna go through this pretty quick, and some of this, I have no idea what they're doing. It's very impressive. Yes, we won't, we probably won't get a tutorial this afternoon, this evening. Additive Manufacturing of Lunar Tarp Stakes, Ruby Rodriguez and Truman Voe. Additive Manufacturing of Lunar Tarp Stakes Continued, Kenneth Chen, Danny Valenzuela, Cosmic Dust Collector from outside the US. I, Aiden, Aiden? Yes, Parra, Aiden Parra, thank you very much. Solar Panel Deployer, Sarah Regosa, and Santiago Soto, Solar Panel Deployer. Dexter Benz, Gerardo Ramos, yeah, and Logan Tac. Lunar Landing Legs and Payload Deployment, Jaden Alvaro. ISS Cupola Dust Mitigation and Duster. Zane Khan, Connor Wetterstrom. Olivia Vargas. ISS Double Seat Track Attachment, Ryan Ready. Who did I miss? Uh huh, go ahead. And Lunar Landing Legs, okay, who else? Yes, I felt. You're all a part of the Cosmic Duster team. Perfect, okay, so, yes, sir? Yeah, go ahead, yeah, you tell us.
Andrew Nguyen with the Dust Mitigation System.
Dust Mitigation System, okay, see, it looks like, oh, you know what? Yeah, let me make sure. It looked like I had more students up here than I had names, since I could kinda tell. Alright, I don't really know all of this, Mr. Merritt, so we're just gonna have to say, congratulations. And you, can you just give us a, just an overview of what, what this meant? I mean, they're, you know, they're successful.
The last group that was mentioned, there, you guys step up. You guys that are in ISM, step up. These guys develop projects that are gonna be flying on the International Space Station within a month. The rest of these guys, we compete once a year. We had, this year we competed against 400 high schools in the United States. There was over 4,200 projects. They picked 1% for finalists. We won 15% of the 1%, which was 40 school, 40 projects. We won six of those, which is 15% of the finalists in the United States.
And you've won some accolades yourself. We'll do that another night, actually. We will go ahead, I'm gonna pass the mic down. If you're a senior, grab it. Tell us where you're going to school and what you're studying.
My name is Ryan Ready. I'll be going to the University of Texas at Austin to double major in Mechanical Engineering and Physics.
I'm Olivia, I'm Olivia Vargis, and I'm going to Georgia Tech for Aerospace Engineering.
I'm Andrew Nguyen, and I'm going to Texas A&amp;M for Chemical Engineering.
I'm Zane Khan, I'm going to UT Dallas for Mechanical Engineering.
I'm Connor Wetterstrom, I'm going to UT Austin for Music Performance.
Hi, I'm Sarah Michael, and I'm going to Texas Tech University for Mechanical Engineering.
I'm Jaden Alvaro, I'm going to Alvin Community College for Filming.
I'm Michael Batson, and I'm going to Tarleton for Ag Economics.
I'm Logan Tac, I'm going to Kansas State University for Architectural Engineering.
I'm Gerardo Ramos, I'm going to Texas Tech for Architecture and Civil Engineering.
All right, yeah, thank you. Oh, yeah, do we need to get a picture? I don't think we've gotten a picture yet, so we'll get all that together. Congratulations and thank you all so much. Okay, we still have a few more Career and Technical Education students. Clear Falls High School, under the leadership of John Height, Biofilm Mitigation. Matthew Caruville, Emily Walters, and Henry Walburn. We'll see if they're able to make it through the crowd. Come on, we'll give it just a minute. John Height's leading the way, great. Matthew, yeah, there you go, Matthew Caruville, Emily Walters, and Henry Walburn. Congratulations, Clear Falls High School. Quick question, what is Biofilm mitigation?
Yeah, so there's, biofilms are the structure, and they clog pipes mainly, because they are a 3D structure of colonized bacteria. And so our goal was to mitigate and minimize their development and also destroy them so that they don't clog the pipes on the ISS.
That's amazing. See, and this is all about HUNCH and ISS?
My name is Henry Walburn, I'll be going to Colorado State University, and I'm majoring in Biology.
I'm Emily Walters, I'm going to Texas A&amp;M San Antonio, studying Biochem.
My name is Matthew Caruville, I'll be attending University of Houston, studying Biotechnology.
Now we have some chargers, come on in. Clear Springs High School, under the leadership of Kami Aloman, Mental Health and Space, Georgia Broussard, Kellen Nalapa, Teague Antley, Dual Use Otoscope for Fiber Optic Camera, Brigham Sarger, and Mateo Pascachi, Psych Copland, and Jos Capet. Project Heart, using AI for Psychology Analysis. Anastasia Horusco, Daisy Lee, using AI to Synthesize Medical Data. Reese Frederick, Reeve Dean, Jessica Maker, Sustainable Edible Foam Packaging Supplement Solution to Promote Gut Health, Audrey Redding, and Miley John Brecher, John Brecker. Did I get everybody? All right, okay, congratulations. We'll get a picture? Absolutely, okay, team. All right, chargers, who is in the class of 2025? Lot of you, not everybody. I'm gonna pass the mic. Over here, okay, I know, I know. 26, 27, yay, works so good. That's very good, we love that. You wanna share that? Tell us where you're going.
My name's Georgia Broussard, I'm going to Baylor University to study Neuroscience and Communication Disorders.
My name's Kellen Alipa, I'm going to University of Oklahoma to study Chemical Engineering.
My name's Teague Antley, I'm going to Lamar University to study Chemical Engineering.
All right, well, congratulations, you have a bright future too. A lot of scholars coming back, so we're thrilled with that. And I guess the rest of y'all, we will see you tomorrow night. Yes, 8 o'clock? All right, here we go, thank you, congratulations. Well, Career and Technical Education, and Ms. Morgan, please stand up. I think your friends are, I think this is it, right? I think we have celebrated, but come on up real quick. I think we have celebrated all of our state winners and the finalists, but just hearing where they're going to school and all the things, I mean, so, about your program, the things that you're doing, we talk about a world-class education, igniting passions and fueling endeavors, and you are truly doing that. So is there anything that you wanted to add, or just how proud you are for seeing all of it, I know.
I almost feel like a proud mom, sitting in the, looking at all the kids, but, I mean, all of the teachers, the students, the students couldn't do it without the teachers, and I just, I know they're all on their way out, but I, just great appreciation to, to all of them and the work that they do with our current tech students.
Thank you so much, thank you, thank you. Yeah, it truly is. And you can tell it's about those teachers, and we know that, and we are so grateful. Well, we have a final, I think, recognition. No, we have a little more art, we have art. First, we're gonna start PTA Reflections Award. The National PTA has a longstanding commitment to arts education under the Reflections Program. We had two students advance to Nationals for the Reflections Art Program. The theme this, the theme this year was imperfections. Congratulations to Clear Creek Community PTA's member, or PTAs. And Kathy, y'all come on up, anybody else here? Anybody in the Clear Creek Community PTAs, y'all come on up. Leadership team, board members. And we are going to see if Savannah Filischak, is she here? From Go Fourth Elementary, come on up Savannah. Who won the overall award of excellence for dance choreography. And McKenna Dunham, from Florence Campbell Elementary. McKenna earned the overall award of excellence for photography. She also earned the Award of Merit at Nationals. Congratulations, girls. We'll get a picture. Okay, congratulations. And tell us what inspired you? Did you, did you have an idea that caused you to submit your piece?
Lily with no I. Um, mainly, just... Well, there's lots of things, but one of them is mainly just that nobody is like perfect, and that's basically what inspired my piece of artwork.
Isn't that beautiful? The theme was accepting imperfections, and we're, you're exactly right, no one's perfect, are they? And that's a beautiful thing, and they had such amazing work that we got to see at the reception. Thank you all so much for sponsoring this, and congratulations. That's great, congratulations. Okay, and now we have some state-winning vase art winners, and these are our highest level, come on in, I'm gonna call their names. Another excellent opportunity to showcase student talent in the area of visual arts. The Texas Vase Competition drew over 32,000 pieces of artwork this year. Only 2,359 advanced to the state event, and a mere 164 or 7% were awarded the prestigious Gold Seal. 39 of the 164 received state honors. Our vase Gold Seal winners, Lilly McPeace from Clear Falls High School, and Bailey Barnwell from Clear Lake High School. Lilly and Bailey, you wanna, wait, yeah, that's right, that's right. And then the following also earned exemplary honors from Clear Brook High School, Nicole Hasky, Clear Creek High School, Hannah Godfrey, Ladea Hall, and Lily Redman, Clear Falls High School, Rory Wattjes, Jackson Byram, Lee Compton, Hayden Hashem, Alexandra Soul, Katie Covington, Delia Fresen, Ashna McConas? No, I didn't say that right. Yeah, and she may not be here. And Newett Tran Nguyen. Let's see, let me make sure, is that it? Nope, there's more. Clear Lake High School, Jeff Josie Reese Augustio, Chloe Chomiak, Benjamin Creth, Hyra Khan, Clear Springs High School, Aliva Newberry, Maya Perry, Valerie James, Candia Pugh, and Tyron Shama. Congratulations, our amazing artists, and tell them where you travel to go to the, did all of you travel to vase? Everyone got on the bus? They all rode on the bus, right? Right, we waved them on, waved them on, and tell us about your experience since you...
It was really fun, I was not expecting that at all. My teacher had come up to me and given me the envelope and told me, and I was just in shock after that.
Yeah, congrats.
It was a really fun experience, and we got to go to a lot of really cool places, like Sculpture Gardens and other places that I've never been to before, and it was, it was really good.
Wonderful, well, these are some top artists in the state, and probably in the country. How many of you are in the class of 2025? Raise your hand, anybody? Wow, that's great. We love that, because that means you can do this again next year. We are so excited. Congratulations, we are so proud of you. We need to get a picture? Oh yeah, teachers, Ms. Albert, yes, y'all come on up, please. Principals, anybody here? You are more than, yes, yes, come on up. Yes, we've got some principals, let's give it a second. Great, you can never have too many pictures of this, I promise you. Congratulations, thank you all so much for just sharing your talents with us and with the world, and we'll look forward to it next year. Thank you and congratulations. We had a lot of celebrations, and a few more than we usually do, but we are so grateful because here we are in May, all of these students have had a chance to compete, they've had a chance to, to excel and to shine, and we just wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to share with you before they go off for the summer, or even more, go off to college. And I think just hearing where these students are going and what they're gonna be doing when they leave us is just inspiring. Well, we can't do it alone, this is a partnership with the community. Everything we do is a partnership, and particularly with our PTAs. And so we're gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to Kathy. Ms. Gault is our outgoing president of the Clear Creek Community Chapter of PTAs, and she is gonna give us a summary and updated report. Thank you, an annual report.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Engel. I am Katherine Gault, Council President for the Clear Creek Community Council of PTAs. The collective vision of the 47 PTAs that make up our council is to ensure every child's potential is a reality. Because we value the partnership between the superintendent, school board, community, and PTA, and because we count on your continued support, I want to give you a brief update on our important work. The PTA mission is to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. Council's purpose is to act as a primary channel of communication within the PTA network. We provide information, support, guidance, inspiration, and instructions to our local PTAs. We serve to strengthen all PTAs, develop leadership potential, promote PTA membership, and advance Texas PTA's goals, programs, and initiatives. Among our goals this year, we wanted to have a unifying theme that encouraged belonging, fun, and a collaborative exchange of ideas among our local PTAs. Our theme this year was Indy 500 and Race to the Finish. As a community council, we serve PTAs in the Bay Area, specifically, but not limited to Clear Creek, Santa Fe, and Dickinson ISDs. Currently, we have 47 active PTAs, 43 in CCISD and four in Santa Fe ISD, for a combined membership of 11,360. That translates to over 1 in 4 students served by our council being represented, represented by a PTA member. We have had an increase for the third consecutive year. Specific to CCISD, we had an increase at 27 of our campuses, 17 elementary, six of our intermediate schools, three high schools, and the special education PTA. Through the CCC of PTA's Community Membership Program, parents, staff, and the community can join more than one local PTA. We would like to thank our Platinum Community Members, Dr. Engel and Jessica Cheka, who have joined every local PTA in our council. We also had the following individuals use the council membership program to join a feeder pattern of schools or a specific group of schools that need extra support. Scott Bowen, Jay- Scott Bowen, Jay Cunningham, Jamison Mackay, Jocelyn Menchaca, Tushar Kumar and Arturo Sanchez. Thank you for your support. The Golden Apple Award is an important award for PTAs. Our partnership with the district is so important that Texas PTA celebrates every council with a Golden Apple Award when the superintendent, district-level administrators and all trustees join. We received it again this year and I thank you for your support. And membership for next year opens August first. In addition to the council Golden Apple Award, each campus PTA can also be a Golden Apple Award winner if one hundred percent of their teachers and administrators join their PTAs. Seventeen PTAs within CCISD have been awarded this distinction, which is four more than last year. The campus Golden Apple always gives our locals and principals some extra bragging rights. For the third year in a row, Clear Lake High School has received this award. And just the sheer number of faculty and staff at the high school level makes this quite an accomplishment. In October, we provided lunch for the district's principals during one of their meetings. As the Texas PTA mission states, we believe in one voice for every child. This translates to one PTA member registered for every student on campus. For the second year in a row, Mossman Elementary has received the Platinum Voice for Every Child Award by having eight hundred and twenty-two members compared to a recorded enrollment of seven hundred and sixty-nine. National PTA School of Excellence Program supports and celebrates partnerships between PTAs and schools to enrich the educational experience and overall well-being for all students. The path to excellence starts with a joint commitment of PTA and school leaders to work together to achieve PTA's national standards for family-school partnerships. The council has been encouraging our local PTAs to obtain this distinction. North Point Elementary had received it for twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-four. Space Center Intermediate has received it for twenty-twenty-three through twenty-twenty-five. And Parr Elementary and Westbrook Intermediate are in the process of completing their applications. Council has five delegate meetings during the school year. During these meetings, we share timely PTA information, recognize the district's top volunteers and recognize our PTAs for their membership recruiting efforts. At each meeting, we spotlight two or three of our local PTAs with special awards. We gave out five gem awards to individuals for going the extra mile. We honored two campuses for spotlight awards that highlight a unique program at their campus. And two principals received the Power Principal Award for principals that go above and beyond in their support of PTA. We had a wonderful program this fall from Vanderbilt University on drug usage and how it affects brain development. Feedback from that event was extremely pos- positive. At other delegate meetings, we highlighted special education advocacy and adapted PE Day. At our final delegate meeting of the year, we were honored to award Principal Elizabeth Raska of Clear Lake High School the Texas PTA Life Membership Award for her continued support of the PTA mission. And we finished up this year awarding our scholarship recipients at their respective senior award ceremonies. The council provides training for our local leaders in the fall and again in May for newly elected leaders. I would like to thank the district for providing lunch for our May training sessions. We added a training session this year on secondary engagement. We are constantly looking for new ways to make sure the secondary students are served as well. We had sixty local leaders who attended Texas PTA launch in July along with roughly three thousand other PTA leaders from across the state and learned more about their PTA jobs, family engagement, parent education programs and state and local advocacy. We were able to partner with several local businesses to provide snacks, breakfast and swag bags for our attendees, all to help us with our goal of being a community. Texas PTA has a long history of advocating to ensure every child's potential is a reality. Each legislative session, the leaders and members of PTA head to Austin for Rally Day. This year, we had twenty-six local leaders make the journey to speak with our representatives about issues facing our schools and students. Knowing this is not a quick trip, it was nice to hear someone in the hallway say, wow, Clear Creek showed up. At the district level, the council is always working with our local units to bring attention to the issues that our parents and students face daily. Some of the issues we have addressed this year are elementary grading confusion, positive parent reaction to the sixth grade launch program, high school teacher and student engagement opportunities and communication and maximizing parent square. Reflections into the Nationwide Art Program sponsored by National PTA. It provides opportunities for students to be recognized in the arts and in life. Students can submit art in the following forms: dance choreography, film production, literature, music, composition, photography and visual arts. Council collected one hundred and twenty pieces of art from just about every one of our locals and our goal is one hundred percent next year. The entries were judged by community members and twenty-one entries advanced to the state level. And as you just saw, we had two students advance to Nationals. We hosted our annual reflections reception on February twenty-fifth. And this year CCC of PTAs held its council celebration on April sixteenth at Clearbrook High School. This is our premier event of the year and it is an opportunity for all of our PTAs to come together and celebrate the year. Our Indy five hundred theme helped to end our year strong at the finish line. We highlighted the Clearbrook Company Be Choir and Adrian Hicks from the Texas PTA Board of Directors gave our keynote speech. Every year, we host a silent auction at the dinner that supports our council scholarship fund. This year, we provided eleven five hundred dollar scholarships to graduating seniors within the council. And as of May eighth, we are celebrating our seventy-fifth year as a council. Our local PTAs support their schools in many ways. Carnivals, dances, fundraising, Teacher Appreciation Week, student PTAs and senior scholarships are many of the programs and activities our schools have. This is just a small representation of the campus events our PTAs have hosted this year. We appreciate your support to help us achieve our mission. There is new excitement in PTA. We look forward to another year of working together for the good of what's most important, our students. Please know we are here to support your efforts and do not hesitate to call on the PTA whenever we can help. And on a personal note, this is my last year serving as council president and it has been such a wonderful experience for me. We have amazing support from the school board and superintendent and school district and it makes such a huge difference. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And I'll open it up if anybody'd like to say anything.
Yeah, Mr. President. Ms. Gault, I just wanna say thank you. I know I've seen you at a number of events and I know that, uh, whether it's a PTA or a Booster Club or just there as an active parent, I think you really represent and model the things that we value so much in our community for being involved at our campuses, helping to make a difference for students and teachers and really advocating for what we know is best in CCISD. And so, thank you for doing that in the hallways. Thank you for doing it after hours for different events. Thank you for doing it on weekends. Thank you for going to Austin. Uh, just thank you for all of your time, uh, that you've contributed and to the many people that are part of PTAs. Uh, there's no question that the reason there's growth is because people see the value um, and the advocacy and the connection, uh, that you really provide. So, thanks to all of you and thank you for this update today.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just wanna echo, uh, what Trustee Sanchez said. I, PTA is an amazing organization and I have gotten to see that firsthand, um, coming to y'all's meetings and doing different school events. Um, everyone in it just completely gives their heart into it. And I think that shows from the numbers that you guys have, have put up and I think it's gonna be a great next year as well.
Thank you. And, hang on. You will be missed very much. Uh, we've seen you throughout the district working very hard advocating for all of our students and all the campuses, uh, and, and PTA as a whole. Um, you know, I follow a lot of the PTAs' Facebook pages and see all the things they do for our teachers, uh, Teacher Appreciation Week and, and advocating for our students as well in Austin. And so, we do appreciate that. And the plug, joinPTA.org, uh, August first. It's very important. Um, but yeah, all the wonderful things that y'all have done. And we appreciate all your support and collaborating throughout the district with us to support our students and families. So, thank you very much. All right. And next item is our district update.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just a few things. Twenty-twenty-five Teachers of the Year on behalf of the Clear Creek ISD Board of Trustees. I would like to thank our Rotary Clubs of Seabrook, Space Center and League City for rolling out the red carpet for our Teachers of the Year last week. During our twenty-twenty-five Teacher of the Year luncheon, six teacher finalists were recognized and provided a seven hundred and fifty-dollar check from the Rotaries. And then we named the two teachers who will represent Clear Creek ISD at the regional level and optimistically at the state level. Congratulations to, to Vaquila Wright from the Quarter Elementary and Christine Sitchman from Clear Creek High School. What was special about the afternoon was that we had students surprise the teachers and share the why they deserve this honor. HEB School Board Award. Congratulations to our Board of Trustees for being named one of only five finalists in the HEB Excellence in Education in Texas. On Sunday, May fourth, HEB held its award ceremony in Austin where our team was recognized. To make it this far is quite an honor. Congratulations, trustees. End of year celebrations. Well, congratulations to Clear Springs Softball on advancing to the state semifinals next week. This remarkable achievement also marks Clear Creek ISD's first appearance in the state semifinals for softball. And we'll see how they do this week. They're playing, I think, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday? Oh, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, yes. And then hopefully the next week. So, that's the finals. Um, and this week marks the successful end of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Students are closing out the year with finals, celebrations and our graduating seniors have been visiting their elementary and intermediate schools for senior walks. This is a wonderful tradition and a way to thank their former teachers and school staff for helping them along the way. It also inspires our younger students to keep their future in focus. And the last day of school for students is Thursday. And we hope they all enjoy their well-deserved summer break. And then finally, graduations. If we noted, um, this evening, we will begin graduation ceremonies tomorrow evening, kicking off with Clear Springs High School and ending on Saturday evening with Clear Falls High School. We posted and shared important information for parents and guests. There is construction on NASA Parkway leading into Challenger Columbia Stadium. I would like to thank our CCISD Operations Support Services Team, the city and county for their collaboration to minimize the impact on our guests. And we are predicting pleasant weather conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. I couldn't help but notice, uh, Trustee Sanchez wiped his forehead as you said pleasant conditions. We're gearing up for that one. I appreciate it. All right, next up is our, uh, community input. And the purpose of community input is for the entire board to receive feedback from citizens. The board will hear the public comments, uh, but will not respond except as authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act to respond to an inquiry by a member of the public or by a board member with a statement or specific factual information, recitation of the existing policy or to deliberate a proposal to place the subject on the agenda for a subsequent meeting. Matters brought forth, uh, that require a response will be addressed by the superintendent as appropriate. All information received is subject to verification. Community input is scheduled for thirty minutes and has two forums. Those requesting to address the board regarding items on the agenda are granted up to three minutes to address their topics. And those who signed up to address items not on the board agenda are granted one minute. In a district our size, there will certainly be issues or topics which will generate considerable interest from the public. It is important that members of our community be able to address the school board respectfully, without disruption and without fear of intimidation from other int- attendees. On behalf of the board, the superintendent and CCISD staff, we wel- welcome your input during CCISD's school board meetings. We request that everyone exhibit the respect and understanding each person deserves when addressing the school board during the public input portion of the meeting. And with that, we have first up, Dr. Laura Dupont.
Hello. My name is Laura Dupont and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Association of Former Board Trustees. There are many ways to think about a school district. Academic standards and performance, artistic and athletic talent and recognition, teacher expertise and retention, administrative competence, integrity and foresight, rankings and reputation. These are all important indicators of a student, of a school district's effectiveness and we saw many of those tonight being recognized. However, too rarely do we consider community engagement as an indicator of a district's strength. CCISD spans two counties, all are part of thirteen communities and forty-five schools, each with its own culture and characteristics. CCISD serves over thirty-nine thousand students and almost double that number of parents and guardians. Our school board must consider all these voices as they make decisions. We tend to think about our community's relationship with CCISD mostly at select times. First, when there is a problem, like a hurricane or, uh, or a pandemic, when we recognize the interdependent relationship that elevates care and focuses the entire community. And second, when there is an election. An opportunity for a democratic diagnostic test to indicate what is working and what may need to be addressed. Elections are like a community barometer with high pressure meaning change and low pressure meaning that things are calm. This year, the voters chose candidates who clearly demonstrated themselves as advocates for public education. The voters chose Ms. Lily and Ms. Cheka, who are both committed to reflecting the many communities they serve and to supporting a team of eight that will be focused, collaborative and connected to the community's desire for CCISD to fulfill its mission, vision and value statement for each child. The voters have spoken and we, like all voters, wish the entire board all the best as you tackle the many issues that will appear in your inboxes. Job one, and we former trustees speak from experience, will be to establish a new board chemistry, a new team of eight that works for students and teachers and excellence. A board that listens to all voices in our community. Whether they voted for you, someone else, or not at all. Please never forget why you sit where you are sitting. Thank you, Team of Eight, for your service to our community. Thank you voters for elevating the voices of parents, teachers and community members who believe investing in our public schools strengthens our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dupont. Next up, Mr. Tom Davis.
I support public education because of its system of elected governance. I congratulate the reconstituted Team of Eight suited before me now, continuing the Team of Eight theme, and ask that the Team of Eight approach be used not only with the incoming board, with the administration, with new faculty, that it also be offered to our taxpayers and business partners. As such, let me ask, now that you are elected, will there be a Team of Eight to maintain healthy balance of government-based, church-based and privately funded education? Now that you are elected, will there be a Team of Eight inspired as much by the Leadership Institute in, in Virginia as by the Texas Association of School Boards? If, now that you are elected, will there be a Team of Eight faithfully representing the will of CCISD taxpayers in the Gulf Coast Area Association of School Boards and to the Texas Region Four Education Service Center? Now that you are elected, will there be a Team of Eight providing at least one basic education campus focused only on reading, writing and arithmetic with a vision for more? Now that you are elected, will there be a Team of Eight following Louisiana's lead and placing the Ten Commandments in every classroom, future lounge and parent-friendly space? Now that you are elected, will the Team of Eight mindset be encouraged by a Team of Eight training or by the use of wallet-sized thank you cards for all stakeholders in the district? If you are elect- now that you are elected, will there be a Team of Eight advocating that we restore the three-minute limit for non-agenda community inputs? Now that you are elected, will there be a Team of Eight reading the transcripts of the nineteen eighty-four Hatch Amendment hearings available for eight dollars at phyllisslafley.com? Now that you are elected, will there be a Team of Eight actively working to prevent violations of the Pupil Privacy Protection Act detailed in district policy? Now that you are elected, will there be a Team of Eight filtering the book recommendations of the American Library Association and Scholastic Book Company rather than accepting them merely because of their assumed expertise? Now that you are elected, will there be a Team of Eight minimizing the influence of Paulo Freire, a Brazilian Marxist educator, on district pedagogy? Now that you are elected, will there be a Team of Eight monitoring the Leader in Me and Social Emotional Learning Programs, ensuring that they don't become platforms for indoctrination, activism and intrusive surveys? Now that you are elected, will there be a Team of Eight preserving, protecting and defending the constitutions of Texas and of the United States? And finally, if you are elected, will there be a team of... Uh, now that you are elected, will there be a Team of Eight promoting remedies for the social contagion? there be a team of eight promoting remedies for the social contagions that have resulted in the misuse of pronouns to compel indoctrinated speech? After the, now that the election is complete, I ask to be part of the team of eight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. All right, next item on the agenda is action on closed session items.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Sanchez.
I move that the board accept the superintendent's recommendation of Ms. Sabina Doss for school improvement officer.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. And is there any other discussion? No? All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Ms. Doss is currently serving as the Dean of Instruction at Clear Lake High School and has been there about 13 years. Prior to that, she was a teacher and a science specialist at Clear Lake High School and has spent much of her career at Lake. She is definitely someone who's an excellent communicator. She knows how to get things done, as well as very respectful, trustworthy, and I promise we are going to work diligently to replace her at Lake very quickly. She's one of those that it's hard to replace, but we've got some great candidates, and we are excited about the opportunity for her to move in that position. Thank you.
Thank you, look forward to it. All right, next item, our consent agenda. Is there anything, any items anybody wants to pull? And if there's none, do we have a motion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Sanchez.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. And is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Pass unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. All right, next item on the agenda.
Okay, yes, and Ms. Benzai will share some information on to consider and possible approval in an order authorizing the conversion of certain Clear Lake, Clear Creek Independent School District variable bond rate unlimited school building bonds. So I will let her share that information.
Okay. Good evening. So, we currently have 47.4 million in variable rate unlimited tax school building bonds, which is Series 2013B, and these bonds mature in 2035. The end of the current rate period is August, it's coming up, August 14th, 2025. This variable rate program has historically provided the district with a lower interest rate than the traditional fixed-rate bonds, saving the district millions in interest cost. The conversion order that we are asking you to approve will authorize a conversion of these bonds to either a fixed-rate period or a new term-rate period for a set time. We're currently planning to fix the rate out on these bonds for the remainder of their term, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Benzai. All right, I'll open it up. Questions? None? Okay. And I believe we need a motion, right? I think that's, we need a motion. So, do we have a motion?
Mr. President, I move we approve an order authorizing the conversion of certain of the Clear Creek Independent School District variable rate unlimited tax school building bonds, Series 2013B, to a new rate period. Authorize a pricing officer to take certain actions related to such conversion. Authorize the preparation of a remarketing memorandum and enacting other provisions relating thereto.
Thank you, Mr. Mackay. All right, and motion on the floor? Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, pass unanimously. Next item.
Okay. In 2023, CCISD voters approved the issuance of 302 million in school building bonds. The first bond sale in 2024 generated 140 million in capital to fund the voter authorized capital projects. This included 117 million in Proposition B items and 23 million in Proposition C or technology items. The order we are asking you to authorize tonight will allow for a second sale from the remaining authorized bonds up to 162 million, and this order is effective for one year. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions about this request as well.
Thank you, Ms. Benzai. Anybody? So, we'll take a motion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Cheka.
I move to approve the recommendation of the superintendent to approve an order authorizing the issuance of Clear Creek Independent School District unlimited tax school building bonds in one or more series, setting certain parameters for the bonds, authorizing a pricing officer to approve the amount, the interest rate price, including the terms thereof and certain other procedures and provisions related thereto.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Cheka. And motion on the floor, open it up?
Mr. President, I just wanted to recognize our pricing officers that are in the audience. Ms. Benzai, if you can.
So, Daryl Palmer is our financial advisor. Our bond counsel.
Right. Thank you, Ms. County, I recognize and appreciate it. All right, motion's on the floor. All in favor, please raise your right hand. No opposed? Thank you, pass unanimously. All right, and with that, at 8:00 PM, this meeting is over. Thank you.